I'd like to call this, um, Village Board Meeting of Monday, June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. It is six thirty P. M., and we are tonight, uh, virtual and in-person, and there may be some on the phone. So at this time, um, we will go through roll call. Um, Trustee Johnson.
Present.
Trustee Quirk. Trustee Thompson. Trustee Owens.
Here.
Trustee, uh, Booker.
Here.
And President Montgomery. We are here, and we do know that, um, uh, Trustee Seacrest is excused for tonight's meeting. So we do have a quorum, and we would invite, um, all of you to stand and join us with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the first thing on our agenda tonight is persons desiring to be heard, and that can be inclusive of those in the audience or if there's someone on, um, the Zoom. So at this time, Karen.
John Buckley, ninety-four fifty-four Oak Court.
Yes, good evening. As was said, John Buckley, ninety-four fifty-four Oak Court. Three very quick things on Agenda Item Six, Bravo, the, uh, Special Events Committee. First off, thanks for giving it your attention. I really appreciate it as a member of that committee. Um, the first thing is a minor editing comment. Under Section two dash eight-ten, uh, in red, it says, "Lastly, the report shall include all events the Special Events Committee plans to coordinate and performing." I think it should be "perform in." That's just an editorial cleanup I called to your attention. I'm sure it's going to be pleased up before you actually take any action on it. The second thing is a little more substantive, um, and that is, I understand the intent of the Village Board, uh, that if it doesn't cost anything, that it does need to have board approval. Uh, but in a couple of the sections, Section two dash eight oh-six and, uh, two dash eight-ten, there's the phrase, uh, "If it doesn't cost anything besides limited staff time to help coordinate." Uh, limited staff time is a little bit subjective. Uh, for those of you who don't know, our Park and Rec Department is woefully understaffed. And so, limited staff time to help coordinate is very subjective, and I would prefer or recommend that, in lieu of that, it would say, "Based on approval by the Village Manager or his designee, the Park and Rec Director, we can have other events that don't cost anything or don't have any budgetary impact." I would make that recommendation to you. Thirdly, and I'm going to be very brief, I promise, because I'm usually long-winded. I know Trustee Quirk has added some, uh, some things for discussion at the end. I would ask the board give those due discussion and diligence and debate, and not just summarily either approve them or disapprove them, because they will have an impact on the actions and, uh, of that committee. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm done.
Thank you.
Temper Woods, thirty-four thirty-five West Pelican.
Good evening. I too am on the Events Committee, so I have a couple of things. One of the things I was concerned about on Section two dash eight oh-four, the officers, uh, being, um, elected in June, when July is the biggest function that the committee does. It really, I think, needs to be at the beginning of the year, because we're already planning this year for next year. And I just, I, I think that that is an error. And the other things are the things that truly wanted to add is that you be a resident of, uh, Brown Deer. On the application, nowhere does it say you have to be a resident. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you for those comments. And, um, the next on our agenda is elected officials, uh, and staff reports, and those, uh, have been, were they included in the packet? Are there any questions around any of those reports? If not, we will move to the consent agenda. And in the consent agenda, we have a number of items. Um, consideration of the minutes from May sixteenth, consideration to explore the Organics Collection Program, and I believe that's a, a survey that's, um, included in our packet for consent, consideration of John Jennings' appointment to the Tourism Committee, and his application is coming before us now, because the Sheeriden Four Points had a change in management, and he's new, um, so we weren't able to get his application before. Um, number D, consideration of approval for environmental health specialist job description, consideration of approval for the Deputy Health Officer job description, consideration of approval for the Public Health Strategist job description. Uh, all of those, I believe, went before the Personnel Committee. And then the last item under consent is consideration of approval to amend and restate Rogers Memorial Hospital Developers Agreement. Are there, uh, Trustee Quirk?
So I was going to ask you a question.
And Trustee Quirk, I would ask if you could pull the mic up a little closer when you, oh, and have it on. Yeah. So, any other comments? If not, can we, uh, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, agenda with the changes I requested on the minute.
Okay. It's been moved by Trustee Quirk and seconded by Trustee Thompson. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Under New Business, consideration, uh, consider approval of Ordinance Number twenty-two oh-three to amend Chapter forty-two Parks and Recreation to create Ten Mile Park and the Community Square. And, um, Nate Pierkowski is here to speak to that?
Yes.
All right.
So, uh, as the board probably recalls, at our last meeting, we reviewed this ordinance. There was some requests, particularly from Trustee Quirk, uh, and some suggested edits. We took that back, myself and Danielle Gross, the Parks Direct Director, and we made those edits. Those edits are now in the ordinance, highlighted in blue track changes. You have the previous changes to the ordinance, uh, that updated and essentially created Ten Mile Park and Community Square, uh, in red track changes, so you can see where we were in the evolution from the last meeting. And then, we also had a discussion at our previous meeting about the hours of operation, particularly for Community Square. And so there was some, there was some question, first and foremost, about what other outdoor spaces, patios in the neighborhood were doing in terms of their hours. You can see in the memo that Poco Loco and Z's both have a ten-thirty closing time. Uh, Pastiche has a very old development agreement that, at the time, never considered hours of operation, and so it does not have, uh, hours in their, in their patio, uh, operation. And so collectively as a staff, we looked back at the hours of operation and talking with the Police Department, we thought it was best to have some consistency with our noise ordinance that was approved, where we talked about noise, uh, after ten P. M., not being allowed, uh, the yelling and shouting, uh, the loudspeakers and boomboxes. And so with that in mind, and to not create a potential conflict for the Police Department on enforcement, you'll see in the, the revised ordinance that we have before you this evening, that there is a ten P. M., a six A. M. to ten P. M., uh, hours of operation for Community Square. So that does standardize it, uh, and it pulls it back from that eleven P. M. that we were initially anticipating for, uh, Friday and Saturday nights. So with that, we'd be looking to move forward and, and get this adopted this evening, uh, but open to answering any questions you might have.
Trustee Quirk?
Um, why wouldn't the park be ten-thirty like Poco Loco? Why wouldn't it be the famous Poco Loco?
It really goes to the consistency of our other park spaces and then generally that issue of noise. Uh, and if we were to, let's say, let the park stay open till ten o'clock, there could be that kind of gray area of enforcement where people are being loud, it's ten fifteen, it's ten-ten.
You mean till eleven?
Uh, well, our-
Let them stay open till eleven?
Even if it stayed open till ten-thirty, there would still be that thirty-minute period of people could be in the park and being loud, and then our Police Department would have to enforce that. And so the thought was, instead of creating a potential situation where, you know, the police have to use their discretion and determine, is this, is this, uh, talking, urging on shouting, is it too loud? Let's make it simpler and curtail that potential conflict by closing the park at ten P. M.
So is the thought that the music would shut down at ten, and everybody has to high-tail it out right away? Because what we talked-
Trustee Quirk, can you?
I'm sorry. So what we talked about, I thought, was that the music, loud noise, shouting, whistling would stop at ten, but the park itself would shut down at eleven to create a last-call situation, um, let people say goodbye, move on. Was that the police input that changed that?
Yes, yes, correct. And, uh, you know, I think what we will just need to do is work with the operator and, and just kind of bump up that schedule and say, music should start shutting down nine-thirty, nine-forty-five is your last call. Get people moving to, to meet that ten P. M., uh, shutdown time.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, there is a recommendation for motion. Can we entertain a motion? If you do, please speak into your mic after I recognize you. Trustee Owens.
I move that we, uh, make the recommended changes to the ordinance as proposed.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved to approve the ordinance to amend Chapter forty-two, and it's by Trustee Owens and seconded by Trustee Quirk. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the, uh, consider, consider approval of Ordinance twenty-two oh-seven, amending the Special Events Committee. Um, that is in your packet, and we have had, uh, a couple of people to speak to some of the changes, uh, that they would like to see. And I would ask Tyler if he would speak to the, um, the staff worked on this to bring it back to us. So any input that you have.
Thanks, President Montgomery. Uh, thanks for the committee members who are present to give your comments. Always appreciated to hear from the committee itself, uh, prior to, you know, any changes to the ordinance. So I greatly appreciate your time and review. Um, during the last committee, or, uh, board meeting, uh, staff was directed to make two changes, uh, in the ordinance. Um, one was related to the annual report, um, that, including a list of events that would be accepted by the Village Board. So when you receive that report in October, you would be approving a motion that would accept the report as well as the upcoming events over the next twelve months that would be listed. Uh, and then in addition, we tried to include some language that spoke to, you know, if there's, uh, no fundraising and no cost, that, you know, the committee would be able to do that, um, on its own. Um, and, um, based on, um, uh, the comments from John, you know, as far as the limited staff time, if you wanted to modify that to subject to Village Manager, Village Manager or his or her designee, I would be fine with that comment. I think what the main point we're getting at is just having staff be able to manage their time. And if they felt there was a, an ask that would have, that would be too much for them, that they would have the flexibility of saying your name. So that modification, I don't have any issues with personally. Um, and then from a staff perspective, we put in two, since we're opening the ordinance, uh, we put in two, um, very brief ones, um, you know, talking with, with Danielle as far as putting in that, you know, uh, a special meeting could be called by the chairperson or the staff liaison with consultation with the chairperson, just recognizing the importance of having that staff liaison involved, um, with the, the meeting process. Uh, I will admit, I was the one that made the edit about June instead of November. Um, and, and so I just want to be able to verbalize that with you as a board, uh, my logic. In the end, I have no preference as far as how you want to go about the change. The reason why I suggested the change was, uh, you do your appointments in April, May. So if you have a chair who ends up terming off the committee, um, in April, May, what do you do with the chairperson at that time? And so, for me, if you're having an elect, or you're, you're, you appoint someone in November, and then they're voted, uh, or, or their term then expires in April, May, there's a huge question as far as how you go about the chair at that point in time. So for me, I wanted to have clarity and align that with the other committees by having it in June rather than November. Um, also talking with Dani, uh, she mentioned a lot of the planning process is concluded by June. Um, so if you had, even though the event would not happen yet, uh, that a lot of those activities have already been coordinated at that, by that time, which I've done the Fourth of July, by June, majority, I know, of the committees or the events have been concluded. So if, if the committee does not like that, I, I have no issue with November, but we need something in the language that speaks that if a, a chair does term out, um, and is no longer, um, renewed or appointed by April, May, we need something, some kind of language that speaks to, to that in the ordinance, because right now there is none. Um, I know you have a vice chair, so it, my assumption would be the vice chair would take over, or you would have a special election then to fill that in, but that's, uh, a question that right now is not outlined in the ordinance. So if you wanted to keep the election in November, I would highly suggest that we have some language that would speak to that.
Trustee Quirk?
So if I could just address that topic while we're on there. Um, Chair and Vice Chair have significant responsibilities on the Fourth of July and leading up to the Fourth of July. A lot of the planning is done, but there's still, there's still work to be done and on the day of, they play large roles. So it doesn't have to be November, but it should definitely be after July, so that you don't want to take, you don't want to take management and, uh, you know, chairmanship of the committee away from the committee the month before the major, the most major act of this committee. So the timing is just terrible. I mean, it could be in August. Um, the committee doesn't meet in July because the Fourth, the Fourth of July, and then everybody, you know, tired and bunched up in the month of the break. I mean, it could be, but it should be after July.
So if we do that, I would recommend then we, and if you want to keep it in November, I have no issue with that, but I, I just, I, I saw that lapse. I mean, when I'm reading it, and I said, if we lost a chair because they weren't reappointed, what do you do? Um, so I would recommend some language that would speak to that. So my question would be, you know, I mean, the two options I could think of is you either A, have a special election, um, or B, the vice chair assumes the role until you get to November, when you have another election. And for me, once again, I don't, I don't have a preference, but one of those two options I, I, I think should be in there.
I, I think you could do that language and, and, um, leave the election in, uh, after July or November or whatever. I think you could include the, you know, uh, what do you call it? The hierarchy of, you know, succession. Um, if, if the chair quits, then the vice chair takes over. If the vice chair and the chair quit or their term is up, then you go to election. I think you could have that sequence in there, but definitely don't, don't disrupt leadership of the committee before the Fourth of July.
Any other comments? I do have, um, uh, there were some additional recommendations to be considered for this committee, um, that Trustee Quirk, uh, wanted us to discuss tonight. One is about adding a residency requirement for all confirmed members. One was extending the appointed Village Trustee to a two-year term for the committee. And the third was clarifying that all advertising performed by the committee shall be approved by the Village Manager or his or her designee. Um, and I am asking that those three items be tabled until our next meeting, when we will, I believe, we'll be discussing all committees.
Correct. That is the plan.
And so, because some of these may also affect other committees. So instead of pulling this out for one, having it as a part of the full discussion, because there may be other committees that this should be considered for also. So I would ask that that discussion be tabled until we have the discussion around all committees. Is there any, um, question or concern? Trustee Quirk?
Why don't we table this whole ordinance till that time, too? That way we don't go in something and then have to amend it again.
That is, uh, are you making, putting that in the form of a motion?
Yes. I motion that we also, uh, put the ordinance approval on hold until that discussion at the next meeting.
Is, uh, Trustee Thompson talking to you? It's on.
Okay. My question is this. So based on us tabling this until the next meeting, would that give Tyler an opportunity to change the language that was mentioned regarding, um, changes to the composition of the committee? And there was one other thing.
Yeah, the trustee term.
And the term, yeah.
Well, he won't be changing it until it comes back for the full discussion.
Uh, okay. Yeah, I, well, I'll make that edit change to Section two eight-ten with performing. That was a great catch. Thank you, John. So I can make that edit. And then, um, I mean, if there's some general guidance that you as a board can mention as far as how you would want to go about if the chair ended up resigning or, 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 I, I'm thinking of the scenario where they're, they're-
Not reappointed.
Not reappointed, I can edit that section accordingly. Um, so, I mean, I don't need a motion on that. If you give me the general direction, um, I can make that edit, and then you can still defer that or this item for June twentieth, and I can have that modified in time.
Any comments? Uh, Trustee Johnson. Is your microphone? But the concern would be if you wait to November and the chair that's there has not been reappointed, or they resign, then you have months before you have a chair. But- Wow. And that's, I think that's what Tyler is asking, what's-
That makes sense.
I pers, uh, from a staff perspective, I have no issue with that. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Right.
Because when I, you know, that was just something I, I had inquired about when reviewing that. I have no issue with that. So I mean, if that's, if your, if the board is comfortable with that, I would just add a little language, just clarifying that, and then we would be done.
Uh, Trustee Johnson? All right. Um, so do you want to bring that back to the next meeting?
Yeah, that will just be general direction I received. You don't have to include that in the motion.
All right. All right. So we don't need to make a motion now?
No, we have a mo, did we get a second on the deferral yet?
Not yet.
Why don't we do it?
I'll second that.
All right. So it's been moved by Trustee Quirk to defer item, uh, consideration of approval of Ordinance twenty-two oh-seven, amending Special Events Committee. It's been seconded by Trustee Thompson. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is consideration, uh, consider approval of Comprehensive Plan Update Service Agreement with AECOM. Is there a way to pronounce that? Okay. All right. AECOM Technical Services, Inc. And Nate, you want to, um, share with the board?
Sure. So, uh, AECOM is proposing to provide professional planning services. Uh, it's a tongue twister, uh, but, uh, they're proposing to provide these planning services to help us with a comprehensive plan update. Our last comprehensive plan was completed in two thousand and nine. We have, uh, done very well in following that plan and achieving many of the goals therein. It has definitely, uh, been a good plan for us, but there's been a lot of changes in the community, both from a built environment and demographically speaking, that we think it's time to revisit and, and plan for the next ten years or twenty years. Also, there is a statutory requirement by, uh, the Wisconsin State Legislature that also stipulates that there should be a ten-year update, and so we're a little bit behind on that, somewhat due to COVID and, and the challenge of public outreach over the last couple of years. And, uh, so that's why we're bringing this proposal forward at this time. It is in our CIP, uh, budgeted for twenty-five thousand dollars. AECOM is coming in just under that at twenty-four thousand nine seventy-eight. Uh, President Montgomery, uh, manager, uh, Tyler, uh, myself sat in on a couple of interviews with two qualified firms. We felt that AECOM really presented, uh, the best in terms of public outreach and their understanding of the community. They also happen to be the firm that helped us complete the first, uh, go-around, so we think that they would serve us well. And we would be routing this through the Plan Commission and then holding, uh, some other outreach efforts, both survey in person and virtual, uh, probably over the next six months before we complete this update. So we'd be looking for approval of that contract with services, and, uh, Attorney Polk and Attorney Bayer did look at the, uh, contract and the issues with that.
Any, uh, Trustee Booker?
So we did not issue a formal request with proposal. I did reach out to firms that we were familiar with in, uh, in the planning world, architecture, design world, Burbicker, uh, Mead and Hunt, uh, MSA, and AECOM. Uh, so we directly solicited them. Uh, in the case of these professional services, we are not required to go out to bid for these projects. And so we kind of honed in on individual firms that we thought were the best that, that were the we-
Trustee Quirk and then Trustee Owens.
So we have a budget of twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
Did you tell them that amount?
No.
They just happened to come up with this idea?
They, they may have looked at our CIP. Our CIP is available.
Okay.
You know, so that's probably where they, that's probably where they thought they were right that number. But we did, we did not tell them.
So it was just a proposal with what we said last?
Uh, it is, because it's a condensed update, it actually was a fraction of what we spent. It's a quarter of what we spent for first. Hundred, yes.
Trustee Owens.
Question I hear in terms of, um, request with proposal, uh, in the ordinance, is there anything that shows there's some backlog there? Is there some type of threshold or something for those?
There is not. Not in, not in our, not in, not in Village Ordinance.
Not in, not in our, not in, not in village ordinance.
Other questions? If not, we do need a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Trustee Johnson?
You mentioned that they did this report about twelve years ago?
Yes.
Were you here at that time?
I, I was, yes.
So at that time, what was your sense of the information you got back? As you said, you achieved most of the goals that was laid out. Was there certain key things that they both did not achieve? That you, you can share with us?
So off the top, you know, there's nothing dramatic that stands out that we did not achieve. We did about a year and a half ago, prepare a report for the plan commission and village board that can give you a deeper dive. I'd be happy to send you that link. That will show you what the goals were. There was roughly, I want to say about eighty goals. And of those eighty goals, we had actually achieved about seventy percent of them. Of the remaining thirty percent, fifteen were aspirational and almost unattainable, given changes in the environment and other finances and politics. And then the other fifteen kind of remained available and I think can be incorporated into this new effort. A lot of the goals centered around, you know, redevelopment, moving the DPDW, for instance, looking at our facilities like the library, updating our zoning code and our sign code, which, which we've achieved. And, and so I think now, now that we've done a lot of that, it bears time to think about the next, the next phase of redevelopment and planning.
So when it comes to that piece, I guess you and Tyler have ideas that you need to also focus on, or you just give it a nice break?
So we're definitely going to focus on the economic. So there's, there's ten statutory required sections in the comprehensive plan. From land use to intergovernmental cooperation, to environment parks. And so we're definitely going to focus on the economic development and the land use. And I think that there are some key areas that we're also going to focus in on. The marketplace, our business park, the Brown Deer business park, the intersection of Green Bay and Brown Deer Road, some of the lagging areas on the west end of Brown Deer Road and on Bradley Road. And then I think we'll be looking at housing. That is another important piece. And its effect on the school district, and broadly talking about affordable housing, apartments, and what the community wants to see in terms of new product offerings and housing. So those would be probably our main focus areas that we identified when we talked with AECom. And also the other firm kind of highlighted those areas that they were going in on. I think we would not just dismiss the other required chapters, but I don't think that there needs to be a broader update on intergovernmental cooperation, for example. I mean, we will continue with the IHC, working with the county, the North Shore Fire Department, of course. So I don't know if there's a lot of changes in some of these other chapters, but housing, land use, economic development would be good ones.
Also, just related to the outreach to residents. Square to me, what happened the first time, is what happened this time around, of course, to be more effective engaging residents.
So our first comprehensive plan, we definitely had an outreach to over a thousand people. There was multiple public meetings. We advertised through all the channels available at the time. We even had some radio spots for people to get involved. There was an online survey. I think we will follow up with some of those efforts. AECom has designated at least two public involvement meetings. One could be virtual to enhance attendance. The other can be in-person, to have it be perhaps more engaging. Because there's sometimes some challenges with virtual meetings in terms of getting quality involvement. They also proposed to have drop-in days, where they would have staff at Village Hall or some other central location where people from the public can come and discuss anything about the plan. We will have at least a couple of our plan commission meetings that will be open dialogue, where we will talk to the commissioners about it. And then there, there is, in their proposal, a goal of having the trustees have an opportunity to weigh in as well as a selection of other key stakeholders that between plan commissioners, trustees, and staff, we can identify, you know, do we, do we want to go and speak with the heads of local businesses? Or is it, you know, the neighborhood watch group? Or is it, you know, some of the other committees that we have here? So that would be kind of the start of the outreach, bracketed by our social media, our magazine, our website, and any other ways we can communicate to people, hey, take a survey, come to these meetings, come to the drop-in days. So that's definitely a goal to really promote the community to kind of come and weigh in on this. And I, and I think we want to be clear to the community that this is, this is a land use document, so it, it has to follow a bit of structure. And, you know, we're not going to be able to kind of dream up a wish list of what business you store, you might want to see at the marketplace to fill the holes vacancy. You know, we can touch on that in broader terms, but, you know, we're not going to kind of get into the weeds as much on, on those specific topics.
Yep.
Any other comments? Trustee Booker?
So Nate, what would be generally timeframe?
We're thinking six, yeah, we're thinking six months. So if this contract is approved, AECom would be looking to start in July with, generally what they would start with is data analysis. So they would kind of pull all the updated census data, all the new economic information in the village, and start using that as a baseline. And then I think we would start with our plan commission and talk big picture about what areas of the existing plan we're going to update and where it is a plan commission will direct our focus. And then six months, maybe a little aggressive, but I think it's doable. I think a lot will come down to what type of feedback and public involvement we get, and if that, if that changes some of our thoughts and visions. I don't see it going past eight months, or let's say nine months just to be on the safe side. Because, you know, I don't want it to languish either. That, you know, that's a problem if we're, if we're not getting focused in, in clear vision, and we're just kind of spinning our wheels. That, that's not good either.
Anyone else? If not, we do need a motion.
Um, I would like to make a motion that we approve the contract for professional services for AECom to update the village comprehensive plan.
In the amount of?
In the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Booker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it motion carries. The next item, two items, but we'll take them one at a time. Consideration of approval of ordinance number twenty-two oh eight, amending the village charter ordinance number three, village manager, a charter ordinance establishing office of village manager for the village of Brown Deer and defining the duties of office. And this came up a few months ago. Tyler or Attorney Polk, which one would you like to speak towards?
I'll speak on it, and thank you, President Montgomery. These are relatively straightforward. They were drafted by my office. But I would like to first talk about the powers that this board has in granting these charter ordinances. And again, there are two, three and eight. So Wisconsin statute, section sixty-six point zero one zero one, and there are two subs, that's sub one M and sub two, are where this board will get its power to do its voting today. And I do want to be clear, for the charter ordinance, it's not a majority vote. It's a two-thirds vote that is needed. So the, the ordinance came about when we were discussing how far the, or excuse me, how long the manager needed approval for putting in some type of resignation paper so forth and so on. Long story short, the previous ordinance came from the nineteen fifty's. I believe it was nineteen fifty-seven, if my memory serves correctly. Back then, an ordinance like that was actually quite normal. You needed circulation in, in the newspaper or whatever method that they used to communicate with people in the, the given area. Now, quite a few things have changed. You don't need that time necessarily because we posted a job listing on LinkedIn. You could have twelve applications by the end of the, of the day. Whereas in nineteen fifty-seven, it would take a, a much longer period. So this is just to address that time period going from ninety days down to thirty days, which is still a reasonable period, and it lines up with a lot of other jurisdictions. So that, I try to get it out there quickly. It, it's not too complex, but that is, is the ordinance change in a nutshell.
And if you look in, in your packet, Attorney Polk is correct, it was March of nineteen fifty-seven. So we know we're a few years away from that. A lot has happened. Any questions or comments? And Tyler?
Just one other point I would clarify. If the, the board adopts either D or E tonight, what happens then is we do a, a notice that is issued, and the public has sixty days to attest or challenge, express concern about that adoption. And then if we were to exceed that statement, we'll work with Attorney Polk and Attorney Bayer as far as how to proceed. But it's a sixty-day window, and then if nothing arises, then it becomes fully adopted. So I just want to clarify that's a one, small difference in a charter ordinance amendment.
Trustee Cork?
So in ordinance number eight, right now we have two defined, right? Treasurer and Assessor?
Yeah, so if I may, if I may, if it's okay, really clear summary for item E. In, in number eight, section two summarizes treasurer. Section three summarizes assessor. And then section four basically states you can combine them together as a comptroller. Well, A, technically, we're not doing that right now because the assessor's a contracted out position. And B, we're no longer going to be using the comptroller language. Instead, we're calling it a finance director, who happens to also have the treasurer responsibilities. So because of that, we're just proposing for number eight to repeal that altogether, that language of comptroller.
Primarily that should be the change?
Yes, I don't, yeah, it, it won't change the way we function at all. It's just changing the terminology.
And again, when did that create it? Probably back at the same time.
Yeah.
Yep, March two. Any other comments or questions? If not, we do have to take each one of these separately. So we need to entertain a motion to approve ordinance. Trustee Thompson?
I'm going to adopt ordinance. Twenty-two dash eight, amending the village's charter, charter ordinance number three, village manager, a charter ordinance establishing the office of the village manager for the village of Brown Deer and defining the duties of the office.
Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Owen to approve the ordinance amendment twenty-two hyphen oh eight, number three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it, motion carries unanimously. So we have more than two-thirds. The next item is consideration of approval of ordinance twenty-two oh nine, amending the village's charter ordinance number eight, officers, excuse me, village treasurer and village assessor combined officers to be appointed. And we have had discussion on that. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance change? It's been moved by trustee Cork. Is there a second? And seconded by trustee Thompson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it, motion carries. That concludes our agenda for tonight. And I move adjournment at seven fifteen P.M.